I'd like to call the order, the open session meeting of the Air Planning Board for February 28th, 2023. First item is regards the agenda. I would like to suggest that when it comes to meeting minutes, that we consider reviewing and approval the minutes for the 10th of January 23. I hope we can get to that. Any other comments on the agenda? Hearing none, may have a motion to approve the agenda.
Move to approve the agenda and include January 10th, 2023 minutes for approval.
Second?
Seconded.
All right. Any discussion? All in favor?
Yes.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, unanimous, all five from aye. No covenant bond releases today?
No.
So that brings us to the special permit for One Bishop Road, and the applicant is here. Come and join us at the table. And Jeff, do you mind if I read it?
Please do.
Okay.
Please do.
So, Air Planning Board Special Permit and Site Plan Review Public Hearing for American True Merit One Bishop Road. The Town of Air Planning Board will conduct an in-person public hearing at 6:15 PM on Tuesday, February 28th, 2023, in the first floor meeting room at the Airtown Hall regarding the application of American True Merit for special permit and site plan approval for a change of use from automotive detailing to light industrial welding and piping services within a 5,840 square foot existing building on a one acre lot. No building additions or new site work is proposed. The property is located in Ayers General Business Zoning District. Application and plans can be viewed at the offices of the Air Planning Board and Town Clerk at One Main Street, Town Hall, Air, Massachusetts during normal business hours. Very good.
Okay, if I may preface remarks just quickly. Yes, the applicant met with just a small group of us because they're working in an existing building, and we thought that, you know, a fully engineered site plan, you know, that we typically get for new construction or a new site, you know, was not warranted in that case. So, we agreed that, you know, modifying a plot plan and putting, you know, a few of the planning board title block and the date in a key would be sufficient. And since then, Heather over there has found perhaps a more recent version of a site plan for the site which we can circulate.
Can you show Chad?
Yes, yes. And I'll pass this around to everybody else. And as well. You have one, right?
Uh, no, I took it to copy.
All right, yep. So because this is, um, this is a manufacturing in the general business district, it requires a special permit. So that's what the special permit is for, is essentially an industrial use in the business zone. You know, personally, I think that's fine. It's, you know, it's sort of quasi-industrial, probably back and forth through the years. So that's, you know, that's something that the planning board needs to make a motion on before the end of the evening, if they're ready, is to approve the special permit, and the criteria for that is in Section 3.4 of the bylaw. And because it requires a special permit, and also because it's a change of use from what it was before, it requires site plan review, and so that's what, that's what they're here for today. So, you know, to my mind, it's a relatively simple case. This would be an ideal case study for what we call minor site plan review. So, you know, I think, I think, you know, in my opinion, the planning board is ready to act tonight, but, you know, let's, let's hold the hearing.
Okay, great. And Chad, how's it going with the hot shop in the fire department?
Um, right now, that was gonna be my next step. I thought I was getting approved for that to actually work in there, and right now, I'm just cleaning and mounting new fire extinguisher, all that stuff before I call them in. I figured once I-
Oh, okay. So all you need to do is call them in?
Yeah, I was gonna go sit down and talk to the chief and see what he wants. Usually for something like that in towns, that's what I would usually do. But I know that I'm mounting all my new fire extinguishers first, because I know the code and stuff, and then I'm gonna call them in.
All right, thanks, Chad. Jeff, did you have something to say?
I was gonna say, the fire department just shows up for hot shop inspections, typically. You gotta be, you always gotta be on the, on the-
Yeah, we're working a lot of different towns.
They can't do the business until we give them the permit, so chicken and egg.
Do you want the board to make a motion that the documents we received are sufficient for these?
Yes, if you believe they are.
Did everyone hear what Ken just said?
Uh, yeah. I think you're referring to a motion to accept for consideration, yep.
Would you like to make that motion, Ken?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that the planning board accept for consideration the documents presented by American, I'll get it wrong.
True Merit.
American True Merit, for the project on One Bishop Road, and that we find that the plan and submissions are complete.
Seconded.
Any discussion? Do we need to make some kind of notation about the paving that Heather pointed out?
Well, let's get to the approval of the documents.
Okay.
Oh, so you made a motion, but nobody-
Motion second, we just need to vote.
Oh, oh.
Yeah, we just need to vote. I just wanted to check to be sure that we could vote and accept this without the paving being on here.
Any discussion?
So any, any further discussion? That's the reason I brought up, that's part of my discussion. And that's my discussion.
Discussing, discussing.
That's exactly what we're discussing, Ken. So are we good with?
Yeah, well, whenever you, whenever, you know, you do a minor plan that's relying on an old plot plan, there are bound to be differences from what we would get with a, you know, a new, new survey plan, so to speak, so.
So could, could we agree then that the difference is not material to the discussion at the table right now, that it's really, it doesn't rise to the ca- Okay, great. So any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, unanimous, so we've approved these documents as meeting the submitted requirements. What's next, to vote on the special permit and then approval?
Well, see if anybody has any, or see if Chad has anything more to add about their operations, if there's anybody in the audience here.
Chad, did you have anything to add?
I'm pretty easy, I mean, I think everyone knows what we're going for.
Yeah, I think so too.
I mean, it's really just whatever you guys need. It seems very simple.
And I just wanna say for the record that we did do a site visit last Friday to do the site, and we did tour the, you know, around the premises, et cetera. Dennis, did you wanna weigh in on this? Okay, all right. Is there any reason we can't move toward a motion for the special permit?
No, in page three of my staff report, under recommendations of special permit, it would be, the motion would be, the planning board finds that the special permit approval criteria found in Section 3.4B have been met, and I can quickly read those if you'd like.
Jeff, you could read that into the record?
Yep. Social, economic, or community needs which are served by the proposal, which would be, you know, keeping the building alive and an economic productivity. Traffic flow and safety, including parking and loading, we determine that they have, you know, sufficient parking for their eight employees. And we learned too, that a lot of their work is done off-site, it won't be there. Adequacy of utilities and public services, it's fully served by all utilities. Neighborhood character and social structures, the neighborhood character is light industrial and business. Impacts on the natural environment, they will be working entirely within the existing building, they're not going to be encroaching in the back towards weapons at all. And potential fiscal impact, given that it's a small business, I think it would be positive.
Absolutely.
So those are the special permit criteria, which-
Any?
Yep. The motion would be to find that that is accepted.
I moved to see what he said, excuse me.
Yes, so, yeah, I'll accept that motion.
Yes.
And do I have a second?
Seconded.
Any further discussion regarding the special permit? Hearing none? All in favor?
Yes.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, unanimous, approval of the special permit. That brings the discussion to the site plan itself.
Before the motion on the site plan, I have one recommended condition of approval, which if any additions or site work outside of that shown on the current plot plan is ever anticipated, then the owner-operator would need to file for a site plan modification with a new, fully surveyed or engineered plan. So if you do any, you wanna put an addition on or do additional work, you have to come back.
Is that not typically what you have to do?
Yeah, yeah, but we wanted to make it, you know-
Expand the building, you're gonna, you're gonna have to get somebody to draw it for you, is basically what I'm saying.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, I would imagine, it's not in any immediate plans.
Okay. And the only other thing I would, it's not a condition at all, but just you have a Coltech on site, and you may wanna have someone take a peek inside there and just be aware of the maintenance.
Say that again?
So you have an underground water?
Oh, yeah.
It's called a Col- Coltech is like the word Coke for a drink. Coltech's a type of device that holds water underground. They do need maintenance. The wrong time to find out they need maintenance is when they fail and it floods.
Just so you're aware.
If you look at the, you've got that drawing, the new drawing? If you look at the left side of the building, you'll see a note there. They're embedded in stone, and underneath it, most likely catching the roof water or something else. I think it shows in the upper left corner, how it's built.
Yeah, the, the old owners did explain it to me, and uh-
There's more than likely there, there may even be some sort of cover near it that you can open up and look into it and stuff.
Yeah, I know there's a couple of well, test wells back there and stuff.
It's a dome-shaped piece of plastic that has rock inside it, rock around it, and it holds water, lets it dissipate slowly. It takes the surplus water and holds it on the property and lets it dissipate. Fancy dry well.
I forget where we are, did we get a motion or not yet?
I don't think so. To approve the site plan with the one condition.
With the condition as expressed by the town planner?
Seconded.
Okay. All right, do I have a second?
Second.
Further discussion? Go ahead.
So the only thing that changed in Mark's special condition, where he uses the word current plot plan, I changed it to the plot plan we're looking at. So, plot plan modified January 4th, 2006.
Okay.
So we know that that's the plot plan that we're gonna look at.
Yeah, actually, may I, Mr. Chair?
Yes, please.
We use the word shown on the current plot plan, I would like to use the word shown on the offered plot plan.
Yeah.
If that's friendly to you, Mark, in your first sentence?
Sure.
Yeah. Swap the word current to the word offered, or submitted.
Submitted's nice.
Okay, submitted, thank you.
You wanna leave the date on there?
Yeah, with the, submitted with the date.
Okay.
This is just gonna help you in the future.
It's actually, and change it, it's called a site plan.
This is happening so fast that this is-
No, it makes sense, what Heather came here is definitely better.
Actually called a site plan, not a plot.
Yes.
So just refer to offered site plan.
Offered site plan. Dated.
Dated.
Last dated, January 4th, 2006.
Thank you very much, I can't see.
Yep.
Yeah, there you go.
So do we need to do anything about mending the motion because of this change in language? Is that, it's a-
I'd like to move that the planning board accept with the following condition, if any additions or site work outside of that shown on the submitted plot plan dated-
Site plan.
Site plan.
Subjected site plan dated, what's the date again, Mr. Discan?
January 4th, 2006.
January 4th, 2006, is ever anticipated, then the owner-operator would need to file for a site plan modification with a new, fully surveyed or engineered plan.
Okay. And it's seconded?
Seconded.
Second. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
Chair votes aye, it's unanimous, unanimously approved. Congratulations, Chad, and good luck.
Sometimes it's confusing what happens here, but-
I mean, not only does he much of making it easy, so I just need to sit here, smile.
That's it.
All right.
You're good to go.
Thank you everyone so much. Really appreciate it.
Good luck, good luck, Aaron. Copy?
I think you got one.
I did not do right now. No, I'm sure I might even have it, and I know it's here now too. All right, thank you all so much.
So, the next item on our agenda is Nusoya Foods. I believe we have letters on file asking us to, for continuance, and also granting us an extension so that we don't have the risk of constructive approval.
Okay.
That said, I think what we need is to open-
Open and continue.
And continue in one combined motion.
Okay. So I move to open the Continued Site Plan Special Permit, Opera Overly District and Strong Water Permit Hearings for Nusoya Foods USA, One New England Way for a Proposed Major Addition to a Manufacturing Plant Building with Related Site Improvements.
Do I have a second?
Seconded.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
Chairman votes aye, it's unanimous, and we will continue that to our next meeting. That brings us to-
No, we will open the hearing, now we do the continuation-
Oh, I thought we did it combined, okay.
No. What was the date, so did they give us a date? They want us to go to the next meeting?
Yes, March 14th.
And they, have they given us a date on the end of their extension at this point?
April 11th.
So, okay, so we've got a month or so, month, a couple, we have possibly three meetings with that. Okay, great. So, like to move to continue the Continued Site Plan, Special Permit for Opera Overly District and Strong Water Permit Hearings for Nusoya Foods USA, One New England Way for a Proposed Major Addition to the Manufacturing Plant Building with Related Site Improvements to the next scheduled Air Planning Board meeting.
Thank you, do I have a second?
Seconded.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, it's unanimous, continue.
Move. I'm sorry, site plan, to open a site plan hearing for Seal Harbor Companies, Central Fire Station 14, Washington Street, for conversion of the interior space into five residential apartments and a two-story addition on the south side of the building.
Do I have a second?
Seconded.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous.
Oh, aye, thank you.
Welcome.
Welcome.
Sir, you are-
I am Mark Gallagher.
All right, can you-
Okay, if I sit next to you, sir?
Absolutely, pull up a chair.
I'm awesome.
Cal, you might as well make yourself comfortable.
Oh, no, baby, I don't like sitting on that. I don't like sitting next to him.
All right.
I'm on the lock and loaded.
Well, I don't know if there's anything to fight about here, so I think we're in, so, where do we start with this, Mark?
Okay, I'll just give a quick, at the last meeting, the planning board accepted the plan for consideration and opened the public hearing. Also, the planning board took up one of the waivers and granted a waiver for a traffic impact statement. The board also gave an indication that the requested waiver for the visual impact exhibit would be most likely satisfied by the elevations that they provided, but I don't think the board made a formal motion on that one. There was a formal mission, formal motion to waive the traffic impact statement. So what remains essentially, the most important thing, is the issue of the parking.
The parking, and then just the landscape waiver, and then the waiver you just discussed, right?
Right, the visual impact exhibits, and I believe the board indicated that, you know, that most likely would suffice in that regard.
Do you, we need, don't we need to grant a special permit for the use as well? You said that already?
Yes, 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 and they're aware of that, but that's, that's not tonight, because they didn't apply yet for the special permit. But we can do that concurrently as soon as you get us the, the application.
We would love to. So, good evening, my name is Nick Pong, I'm at Goldsmith Press in Ringland, nice to see everyone again. So, as Mark mentions, we haven't provided any updated information since the last meeting. We certainly wanted to use this meeting as Mr. Gallagher is available, so he can answer any questions that I know you were asking about the interior of the building. And then, since the last meeting, the use and the parking special permit request, looking through the zoning and the finding that generally that this use would be not, less intensive than the previous or historical use, and now the application of Section 9.1 or just Section 9, I just had a couple of questions and clarifications on how that board would like to proceed with the request of a special permit. So, I can certainly hit those questions first, you can ask, you can talk with Mr. Gallagher, whichever is the pleasure of the board.
I think we should start with, just get into the parking, most of it, right?
Sure.
So, if I could ask specifically about the special permit of the parking.
Excuse me, one second. You know, the only reason I hadn't done that earlier, when Mr. Discan asked, is that we should give Mr. Gallagher an opportunity to make opening remarks, and I think that's a good idea. The only reason we hadn't is because we got such a thorough presentation from Cal Goldsmith at the previous meeting.
No, no, I apologize.
But I do wanna give you the opportunity, if you have anything you would like to add or say.
No. I'm, I apologize, I couldn't be here on the 14th, and I thought the meeting was just gonna be to accept, you know, the plans, and for you guys to have a general discussion, and realized that you're gonna get into such a deep discussion only as Cal passed along to me, and I thank you for the time that you spent on it. When we purchased the property, our goal was to restore the building, understanding it has significant interest to the town. Cal had previously permitted it for six units, and we would like to use some of the commercial space for our own business. You know, it looks, I don't know, probably 25 or 30 houses in the last two years in town, and we would like to be able to have our own space, as opposed to one that we lease, so that's why we called out the center of the building, and then, you know, looking at uses, we've discussed, the residential element for rental apartments, proximity to the, to the train station, that's fantastic, and we intentionally went to five units. You know, your bylaw says four units, you do not have to have an affordable unit, we build affordable housing, so I thought it would be a nice gift to the town to put the fifth unit in there, add your SHI account, and also, you know, have something to be able to give back to the community. So, I just, I don't wanna get, one of my, one of my concerns, which I've expressed to Mark in the last couple of weeks, is obviously we wanna knock it bogged down in the parking if the fifth unit is triggering concerns. You know, there's plenty of, I believe there's plenty of parking, obviously, right, throughout the town, with the new form-based planning that you do, the commercial uses can find other parking spaces. The prior fire chief, I think, has indicated that, you know, he only had four, used four parking spaces there, and the rest of the folks that responded to the fires park elsewhere on the street and parking lots, you know, and I think that can continue. I don't think that our, the residential units, when they're rented, I, I don't think we're gonna have the prototypical owners that are gonna have two cars.
Right, and may I ask a question?
Sure.
So it sounds like you're gonna occupy the commercial part?
We are.
Okay, and how many employees do you expect to be there, day to day?
We probably have three or four at the most, and it's, it's offline.
So, just tell me about where, how are they gonna commute in, and where are they gonna park?
So my daughter lives in town, so she's gonna walk to the office, yeah. My wife will be driving from Littleton, and then Mark, my son and I are in and out of the office only when we have a customer visit. It's a design center, and you know, since COVID, really, nobody works from an office anymore, mostly, you know, we, we all mostly work remotely. So, it's, it's not a high use, it's more of a showplace.
Gotcha.
You know, and that was why we, we agreed, Alan, early on, one of Alan's visions was those doors be glass, open to the inside, so it's a, you know, more of a showpiece, you know, for the town, like it, it was a historical element, which is exactly what we're trying to pursue.
So, excuse me?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chair, so you say a design center. You're gonna build me a house, I come in there, I look at carpeting, cabinets, all the fit and finish stuff on the inside of the house?
We do, so we were-
Instead of building a model that every one of, you're basically centralizing your model, your model model, if you will.
We have models at every one of our subdivisions typically, but you can't, we've become, we've become a very visual society through the internal. So, you know, when I started 40 years ago, I tell everybody it was an art to build houses, and now it's a science. So it's displaying the science and visually displaying the elements of what they can have. We really don't focus on carpet, to be honest.
Well, I just-
But I mean, that's an example, yeah. So, I mean, we, we build it like we would a high-end home.
It just centralizes the model concept for you.
It does, exactly.
Before I open a discussion of parking to the public, I wanted to make sure that the board all had an opportunity to weigh in. Dennis?
Well, this is actually a question about the-
Could you just announce your name and address?
Oh, I'm sorry, Dennis Karim, Pleasant Street, Ayers. This is just a question, upon granting permissions or permits or variances or however, the authority that lies with this board, the commercial use that he has outlined for us, that his daughter lives in town and that he would be using it as a dining, the permission would carry on to any potential future owner. Is that correct?
Yep.
So, so his particular commercial use for that space may differ were he to sell the building or, or, you know, you know, rent out the commercial space to another entity. That could change. Yes?
Use change, you'd have to-
Any change would trigger a difference.
Any use change would trigger the same hearing we're going through right now.
No, well, but if it maintained its commercial aspect, would that be considered a use change?
If it's a different kind of commercial aspect, it could, yeah. Could be a use change, there's many commercial aspects, so it could change to something that would require another hearing.
Yep.
Like our earlier one tonight?
Possibly.
If it changes the category of the use in our table, you know, if it's a change from a coffee shop to a tea shop, I don't think that would qualify.
But it goes from a, a commercial office to a restaurant, then it changes.
Yes, absolutely, that would be a good change, you know.
A doctor's office would be a separate change, a medical office would be a separate change.
But if a law office comes in after Mr. Gallagher, there would be no hearing.
It would be similar, I would see that as similar myself, but, because, you know, unless they've got 50 lawyers in there seeing two clients an hour, that changes the throughput. Not to be facetious, but that would change, yeah.
A higher intensity would true.
Yeah, pretty much.
Yeah, I'm sorry, so have we begun the conversation about parking?
Yes, we have begun that conversation.
I wanted to give a little context of that, before we get into special permits and all that sort of thing. Overall, and this is in the narrative that they gave us in their application, and I reproduced in the staff report, they're, they're seeing if the board agrees with their contention that applicability of Section 9.11 does not apply, and I'll read it. It states, Section 9.11 applicability in the zoning bylaw, any building, structure, or use of land that was existing or lawfully begun, or for which a permit was issued prior to the effective date of this bylaw, certainly I meant that, because it was constructed before there was zoning a town, except that any change in use to a greater category of parking demand shall be subject to this section. So if the planning board found, it's a finding, if the planning board agrees, that the parking demand now is no greater than it was when it was a fire station, then the argument could be made that they do not have to adhere to the two parking spaces per unit that exist now. So they're seeking essentially to see if the board agrees with the applicability of that clause. So if the board does agree, then parking is not an issue, because, you know, they can do the six spaces. If the, if the board does not agree, then we have to get deeper into the weeds of special permits and all.
I have an answer. I just have a question, and then I'll-
Yes, yes.
Would this, would this, would this apply even when the, the use change is so dramatic, I mean, it's not a fire station anymore?
Well, that's exactly why this clause, I think, is in here, you know, because, you know, Judy Barrett anticipated that, you know, things could change from being an industrial building to residential, say, as we've seen. So, you can read, you know, read their argument there, it's on page four of my staff report.
Yeah, I see it, I need to read it.
So.
All right, let me take this in turn then. Who wants to go first? Ken, Julie, go first.
I'm gonna put myself out there. So, why not? Why get to lose after this time? So, if I'm following everything, I think that's what I wanna learn from what I'm about to say, so I hope that's okay. I would say that this is a significant change from the fire station in terms of parking and in terms of what Chief Johnson wrote out. But I, I want to continue with that though and still say that there are needs of this building and the use of the train and things that we warrant the conversation around needing, what's the word I want? This condition or what, there's a word I want there, but.
I want to do a modification.
A modification.
I'm going to get to that.
Is that, but that's where I'm sitting is that I don't believe it's, I do believe it's a change of use that requires us to have to, is that fair to consider?
Yeah, I mean, to, to look at it. And if you look at section 9.110A of the zoning bylaw, it says that the planning board has the ability to modify or waive parking requirements for compelling reasons, and I'm quoting the bylaw here, compelling reasons of safety, aesthetics, site design or environmental impacts. So.
Mr. Chair, I ask a question directly to that statement.
Yes, you may go first.
Is that all sections of, all aspects of 9.1, even ones that are expressly deemed in no case shall be done?
Section 9.1 needs to be rewritten.
Well, we're not doing that tonight. So instead, the question is, if we're subject to 9.1, the biggest question that I had and one of the questions I had coming in relative to the request for a special permit is, is that section 9.1.5C1 is applicable. And it states that in no case shall the board allow greater than 15% of the required parking be front, in the front setback or front of the primary use. Or at 100%, no way, no way to slice it. So if we're going to ask for a special permit, the question becomes, as Mark comes up, does section 9.1.10 allow the board to waive that clause?
I think it does.
If I may, Mr. Chair?
Yes, go ahead.
I have two questions.
Yes, sir.
I think, I think I see, I think I see my way through this as I see it. Okay? Two things. Yes, this is a use change, but it was in many cases, if you think about what a fire station is, people live there. They do. We have a call fire department. So if a fire happens, not everyone's, nowadays, we have more people in the station than we used to back then. I figure, I don't even know what the numbers were. So I don't know how many people lived in this, how many, how many, what a shift was. It was two, four people with office. I don't know. These are one-bedroom units, I'm assuming?
Two-bedroom.
Two-bedroom units? So we're looking at roughly 10, 10 to 12 people, maybe 13, 14 people tops, but 10 people. So I don't see that as a huge jump in the number of people who might be in this building overnight, number one. Number two, the parking in front of this process, in front of this building is pre-existing non-conforming in my eyes to the conversation about being 100% in front of the building. The building is a desired building. We desire to keep this building in the shape it's in. Take the wings off that are ugly. That kind of stuff has to happen. Leave the coop on and do the roof work. We've done a lot of work on this building. The town has invested in this building through CPC. So I think there's a pretty good argument or a, or a leg to stand on, if you will, that parking in front of the building is something we don't want, but in this case, I think it's a pre-existing non-conforming use. And I feel, and I'm comfortable with that. That's what I was going to say. If I remember correctly, it's five spaces and a sixth space for a guest.
As proposed.
As proposed. And they are all in front with one on, one offset on the left. I forgot.
Three and three.
Three and three with a, with a landscape part in the middle. Yeah, thank you.
Maintains.
I just want to make sure I get the latest plans.
Yes, just to maintain that subdivision.
Absolutely.
Mark, would you have the plans available to put on?
So, I'm not struggling so much with, and I'm not going to answer your question.
That's fine.
Because I know we'll be here with GPR in the future arguing which part we're going to do because we've done that before.
No, well, actually, I.
But you understand.
We feel comfortable.
Yeah.
I can explain how we've, you know, at the last meeting, there was a discussion of the possibility of adding an extra space if one was deemed needed for handicap and would allow for access. So we're in the process of revising the plans to include four on the left and three on the right. I can generally walk you through how we are proposing to do that.
If I remember correctly, the left-hand side of the building, as you look at it, has a ramp that goes into it, which would meet your, your, your accessible needs. That parking space could be a foot or two wider, however, for the door swing, that would work all, that may work. I'm just off the top of my head, but anyway.
So, yeah, there are little, if you could go third page or so, please, Mark?
I, I guess what I'm saying without getting down in the weeds, given where the building sits, given what the building is.
There you go.
There we go.
I think we have a single case opportunity to say it's okay.
I have a comment and then I'll turn you can. So when it comes to me, what we have to decide here is like, look, there are no other places to put these parking spaces on the side. They're going to go on the front. And if we go, because there's no space to either side. And if you go on the front, we're limited to six because that's what you can fit in there. There is, there is no place to put.
It's all parking.
That's it. That's all there is. So the question really, however we justify this, you know, whether it's 9.1.1 or whatever it is, the question really comes down to ultimately, are we content with the six? Are we going to insist on additional parking through other, other means? And that's what it's really about. Hold on. Does, is my, the way I stated it sound reasonable? I mean, is that what's really on the table here? Okay. So I just made the statement. Ken's been waiting patient. I'm going to turn the cabinet. Jeff, you get to go.
I may not say anything.
Okay. I'm going to offer a whole different way of looking at this. And I mentioned this to Cal Goldsmith when he was here the last time. Throw out the discussion of what you presented for, you know, the old sections and all the other stuff and just go right to 9.110, which is the waivers. We, we don't need the argument of what was there before, how many people in the fire station, how much was this, how much was that, and guess work as to what it might be in the future. The real point here is that we're going to list, we're going to give, provide waivers and modifications for the six spaces in the real world. The other side of the coin is that the special permit application, I think, is going to include some distances. You, you mentioned one of the potential issues, which is the parking in front of the building. The other potential issue is the distance from the building. I think it's supposed to be, that was going to be part of your application for the.
Eight feet to the building and 10 feet to the parking.
That was also part of the special permit. So what I'd like to resolve tonight, quickly as possible, is the fact that this board is on, on the right wavelength that we're going to give you six spaces in front of the building. If we're, and we're going to use that with the discussion that was brought up by Mr. King the last time, you're going to provide us with a parking management narrative about that. The parking narrative will tell us, we believe that there'll only be one space used per apartment. The rest of the people will find their way to walking or whatever the case might be. They'll be using other facilities in town. And I want to remind everyone, I think I am correct about this, is the commercial requires no parking spaces. We have no obligation in downtown.
Correct.
For parking, for commercial space. So we're really only talking about the residential spaces and the fact that is this board willing to go beyond all the narratives and just say, look, we're going to concentrate on the waiver modification and the modifications and list how we're going to do it one by one and you'll provide us with a parking management narrative and then we can settle that issue.
Yep, the 100%. Thank you for that. I believe, at least the way Cal conveyed the last meeting to me was, we propose six in case one of the five units needed a handicap space, we can provide a space and take a space for the accessible. Now, the question became, why don't we just provide that extra space now to maintain five spaces, if I understand correctly?
I don't think you got that right.
All right.
I think the consent, the thought was, looking at the drawing, there was no, there was no process, there was no application there for the size of an accessible space. So my, my question was, shouldn't we provide the size for the accessible space now, not the seventh space?
So.
Six with one being ready to go as an accessible space.
So just to clarify that, you can't just designate a parking space as accessible or not. The accessible space needs to be van accessible. So it's two parking spaces.
I know. Okay. It could be two parking.
No, it has to be two.
Indimensional.
Dimensionally, yes.
It's, it's both sides of the, with different sides of the same coin, basically. We need, like, what the thought was is provide enough adequate space to get a handicap space in. If it indimensionally ends up being two spaces, because it's got to be now 15 or 16 feet wide for the van accessible usage and whatnot.
Yes.
Then that's what you should provide at the beginning. But my concern was that we didn't want to chop up the, you know, potential landscape area later on and have to repave and do chipping and cutting, whatever you're going to do.
And to that, what we have discussed internally is the parking spaces to the bottom, to the south, would be expanded to four. I'm just going to say they're four spaces. That's the van accessible.
That makes sense.
Okay? And the way we would do that is take the four-foot concrete walk that's currently at the northern limit and move that to the middle of those four spaces so that it projects from the walkway of those stairs. So you'd be two, two parking spaces, a walkway, two parking spaces. Now that means, for all intensive purposes, the concrete walk to the north, it would grow nine feet to allow that extra space. So you would start to encroach into the southern door, the southern garage door, probably, all those words I couldn't come up with. And it would necessitate the need for the removal of the flagpole. And that will allow us to do a number of things. And I think in speaking with, I'm not going to argue about more intensive existing any of that, but what it does is allows us to try to support the reduction of waivers to maintaining at a minimum one space per unit to be in line with the form-based code requirements. We're in a T5, the T6 says we need to have one space per unit, period, and no case less. And then they will allow us two spaces for potentially the commercial use or one handicap space and then, which would be the residential unit, and then one space potentially as either a visitor or the commercial use. Again, Ken is 100% correct. The commercial does not need any. So we could even leave that extra space or two as the visitors that's required in section nine of the 5% over the total. So I, I think we can get there as well. It's just unfortunately, it's a lot of wasted breaths to make sure that we're all shaking our heads. Does that make sense?
So are, are we deliberating on whether to commit to the, to what you just described, the four and three, for?
So that would be part of our support for requesting a special permit.
What I was, what I was requesting is that we get to, we conclude as a board that we're going to cover, what's going to be, what we do as a board is going to be under 9.1.10, modifications and waivers.
Yes.
We're going to disregard all the other standards because we're looking at a unique site with unique requirements. And then we'll list those approvals one by one. So we say, you know, we've waived this and we voted off the eight feet or 10 feet, we've waived the this and we have legitimate reasons for doing that. So that's, that's what I was trying to.
I actually think you can make that into a motion and I have a feeling it would be a, we don't have, we don't have a diagram in front of us.
We should, we should ask for the special permit.
Yes, you should. Yes, you should.
No, the special permit is going to be separate. It's going to be a separate piece.
We're talking the use special permit, which is just.
No, this parking special permit, the way these were.
Right, right.
But you might not need those.
We, you're going to need both, is what I'm getting at. We're going to accept.
I agree.
The number may be under the waiver, but the special permit would be under the distances of the location, whatever things might come up with that, you know?
All right.
Nathan, did you have, did you want to weigh in on the parking?
Well, I agree, I agree with, thank you, Chair. I agree with Ken. And I think it is important from our discussion two weeks ago that the, that we prepare the site for the eventual need, if it ever occurs for a handicap resident. So it's ready, ready to go. The, what I would like, because this is an excellent case. And I was, I do want to back up and say what I said at the beginning of the last meeting, which is, you said, Mr. Gallagher too, it's great, in my opinion, that, that you are developing this property and it's being salvaged and it's going to have another life. So that's, that's something worth working for. The, the, but I do agree with Ken, a parking management plan, I think, is the key. I'd rather first look forward to what you're doing than to look back to what the history was. And so I'd like, what I'd like to see some, we went through, this is, this is a use case that I hope we see lots more of as form-based code and hopefully a design center is a place for one of these form-based code developments can, can occur. I, I really enjoy sitting through that application process. That there are going to be opportunities for this board to hear parking management plans because of constrained lots. And we went through some last week as far as, you know, make, make a case that because we're so close to the transit, then, and because we're going to have a bike rack, you know, whatever, make it, make it concrete, not, well, the board thinks we're going to get this, so we think the board is going to give it, is not the parking management plan. So something like some, some real evidence that, because, and I say that because with the, what Dennis said last week is, this is going to, there's going to be times when there's going to be a visitor, there's going to be the business visitors, that it's going to, it's going to overflow into the city streets and the nearby available parking. That's going to happen. But what is, what effort did we go through at this point to, to minimize that? Something concrete. So that's, I'd like to see that written in a parking management plan. And then, yeah, I think I agree with, with the board, Ken saying that there's, this is where the parking is going to be. Show us how it stays there.
Dennis?
Yeah, just to kind of piggyback on that, and I think I mentioned this last time we were together. The board, the bylaws, I'm assuming this is a relationship between the board, the town and the owner and the, and the builder. That is, the town at this point doesn't have a relationship with any potential future renters. And those renters are subject to being changed and the new first renters will have, agree to only have one car and somebody's going to be taking the tea and that's going to work great until they move out and some new renter moves in and now they have two cars and frequent overnight guests. So what the renters will do, I think, needs to be codified. And I don't know how you do that to anybody you don't know. So my point is that I think that the parking piece has to be a solid agreement with the owner and with the developer. Right now, it seems like the laws, the bylaws require 11 spaces for five rental units and, or 12 spaces?
No, in the form-based code district.
That's right.
Visit 11?
Well, yeah, yeah. For a two-bedroom, you need two, two spaces plus one for visitor. So it's 11.
And T by one?
Yeah, that's without any waivers or findings of non-applicability and all that, you know? If we go straight by the code.
So, so, so what's being asked for here is we want to have half of that type thing, right, six, I was thinking, right around half of that. So where are the other five spaces coming from, I think, is kind of where you're sitting at. And, and that would be the question that the builder-owner would have the answer. Where are the other five spaces coming from?
I, Dennis, I, thank you. I, I see this, I see the discussion very differently than you do. I don't think it's about making up where did the other five spaces come from. I think that what we're realistically dealing with here is, is the development of this historic fire station worth the sacrifice of those five spaces? That's what it comes down to.
I would call it trade-off, but yes.
Exactly. And it is a trade-off. And ultimately, I think what we're going to decide when it comes down to is, is the trade-off worthwhile? That's what it really comes down to.
I, I'm a little, I'm between you and Dennis.
Sure.
Do they really hand figures this time?
That there, there are reasons why those five spaces aren't needed. And I'm requesting the applicant in the parking management plan write down what those reasons are that would, that, but I, but I'm not as far as Dennis that we can control that. That these, these are what we believe because, again, transit, bicycle rack.
There are alternatives.
It's likely that this, this residential unit will not require those because of X, Y, and Z.
Right. And I would say the form-based code was put in there essentially as a transit-oriented development where it was recognized that there wouldn't be as much parking demand for residential uses within that district because people would be taking the tea or shuttle or carpoolsing or whatever.
Your sense?
So just my observation about clearly parking on the downtown area is very tight. And there are many houses, apartments that have inadequate parking or just barely enough parking, right? Directly behind this building, the fire station, there are two, two buildings or one large building on Lower Pleasant Street, which have, to be frank, have seen better days, you know, are clearly kind of, you know, less than optimally maintained. And they have virtually no parking. I don't think they have any. So when you, the decision to put five units in a building that size on a lot that size, right, means that you're not going to have enough parking. I mean, you can decrease the number of units, right? Or decrease, or you can't do much with the size of the building, but you can decrease the number of units and thereby come closer to where the parking would be more manageable. That's always an option. Because I think that in the downtown area, I think there have been a lot of, there are a lot of structures, buildings, which have less than adequate parking perhaps. And, you know, And, you know, I would think that we would try to do better than squeezing more people into smaller spaces with no parking.
Yes, Cal?
When I did the Spalding building, I came in here for one parking spot per unit. It was granted to make the Spalding building work. No questions and it went, flies right through here. And before I came to a screech and halt, I really believed somewhere, somewhere, somehow in this board or in the plans or something, that I was gonna put in six units, six residential units. It was six pocket spots. And I don't know if a vote was taken, I don't know nothing, but I know that discussion was in full favor of, I wanna say, everybody. And before my chemo brain hit me, I really believed everybody was in favor of that one spot, one per unit, to make this whole thing work. So one worked at the Spalding building and there's a whole lot of good favorable discussion for having one in the fire station to make it work.
Thank you, Cal.
John?
Yes, sir. Ken?
This, the fact that we're talking about this tonight brings up an issue that we haven't been talking about for years. This is not the first time this board has talked about the fact that we have a parking problem in downtown and that we need to address it by changing the zoning bylaws, potentially in the future. We have that, we've had that as an objective and Alan Manoyan has been telling us how difficult this is gonna be to develop downtown unless we get over it. This just serves as an example of what that problem is. I don't have any problem with giving them the six spaces. I think we move on, figure out a way to do it, and then we understand as a board that there's gonna be concessions, but we want this development to happen. There's nobody on this, in this table that's in a room, I don't think, that's gonna say that they're trying to find a way to make this project stumble. We wanna find a way to make it happen. So, how do we just get a list of items we're gonna say, vote on, one by one, and create either a waiver or a special permit to address it? Well, nothing's gonna be perfect in downtown. It just so happens, this is the one that came up first. But every single one that comes up after this, we're gonna have the same discussion if we go to that mixed-use concept where we have commercial on one floor and residential above. We found it across, around the corner, actually, we did have, we did have one other time it happened. And we had to agree on a parking management plan for that as well. Now, that permit expired because they didn't go forward with the project.
Correct.
But I don't wanna see this expire. I wanna see it start and let's move on.
Yep.
Can I just address, please? Mr. Gallagher, go ahead. From a developer standpoint, right? Any project has to be economically feasible. You have a 5,000 square foot structure or more that's there. It's been expanded over the years as the firehouse needed. Parking was never an issue previously. Of all of the uses that could be put into that building, this is probably one of the least intensive. If it was a rush to go coupling with what's on, you know, on Main Street, you'd have a significantly larger problem with parking. As you look at the uses and trying to make it economically feasible, reducing the number of units to meet a parking requirement makes the project not feasible, dollar-wise. And that's, I think, what this board is gonna be facing. As you look at form base down the road is, you have, you know, parking issues in any downtown. If you wanna revive your downtown with any development that's mixed-use, you have to be able to have the two elements and the residential really carries it. Because until you get growth downtown, there's not gonna be commercial uses. The attorneys and the, I mean, you got beautiful restaurants and it's come a long way.
I understand.
But to make it to the next level...
It's true.
And then just from a, from a non-developer standpoint. And I would say that, I think that we do have a bias toward increasing the number of housing units in here because we recognize as an urgent needs and stated in the master plan and it comes up continually at just about any board or committee meeting anywhere. So I, I'm sorry, someone else wanted to, so someone at the table, go ahead, Dennis.
So, in terms of economic viability, and I agree and I applaud your risk-taking and willingness to kind of invest in the community. From the community, well, from my standpoint, that is, the due diligence needed to determine what might be economically viable at that place ought to have been done prior to the acquisition of that, I would assume.
I did it. The man had six permits.
Mr. Chair, may I ask that we move forward? We've had this discussion and I would appreciate...
This is a great discussion for a resident to have with a developer.
But I don't know that we have anything else to add to the topic. If I'm missing something, please correct me, but I would appreciate.
I think that's right. Dennis, what is there materially more to be said about the parking? At some point, we gotta come to a decision, yes or no? And that's where we're coming.
No, I understand, but I was responding to his, that is, I think, what I would say is, I think it's, in terms of enforcing the bylaws or seeking permits, I think it's important that we, as a town, understand that the bylaws were promulgated, the planning board did all kinds of work with it, et cetera, et cetera, and they wrote them down. And, okay, these are the rules we'll live by, all right? People wanna invest in the community. They come to the community and say, okay, I wanna do X. Okay, so we'll change the rules to do X, or we'll change this bylaw to do Y, or we'll change that variance to do X, right? So the investment in the time necessary to create the structure, I just think that the due diligence that needed to be done for the developer to understand its economic viability needed to be done prior to the, I assume, the initial purchase of the building so he would know what his financial risk was.
I did.
But why does, if those permits, if his permits now relayed to the new owner, so he does have six permits for those units.
He doesn't, that's history, that's ancient history.
Yeah, so don't, so the fact that those permits previously, this does not invalidate what I'm saying.
No, it doesn't.
I got an answer for it. I like to, I'll follow up.
So, all right, no, I understand.
I don't wanna get in a big argument with you, Dennis, but you brought up an interesting point about the fact that the bylaws were created, I was instrumental in doing a lot of this work, okay? But there's also the part that you forgot, okay? Which is the fact that the bylaws include the paragraph we're talking about, modifications and waivers. There was a reason for putting that in there as well.
I understand.
So, don't hang, don't hang up on the printed word of everything in here, that you can't move away from it, because there's a very strong reason for putting in modifications and waivers. And I'll, I'll have to say, this is one of those reasons right here in front of us. We run into these things. So we are exactly staying in accordance to the bylaws because we're using Section 9.1.10, modification and waivers, in the bylaws to get to where we're trying to get to. We're specifically indicating where we're gonna go with this section.
I, I, I think that you're right and I would also say that there's absolutely nothing casual, and I'm not suggesting you were saying that at all, but there's nothing casual about our deliberation about whether this merits that. And I think if there's any project that, for which modifications and waivers are relevant, the preservation of an historic building that means a lot to this town and will provide housing and a commercial space is exactly that use case.
And done in a beautiful way.
Yeah. So, can we get, I wanna bring it back in. So, this has actually been a really good working session with the proponent for this process. The question is, where do we go? I like Mr. Diskin's recommendation to use 9.1.10.
Me too.
I actually think that if I was gonna read the tea leaves at the table, that there is, Kyle's got some work to do, you've got some work to think about, to come up with a plan that's going to not squeeze out the doors, not squeeze out the landscape out front, but come up with a process. I'll tell you right now, I hate, I hate cars in front of buildings like this, but this is where we are.
We're gonna go.
Okay? That's a trade-off we're gonna have to make. I like the idea of a parking narrative. There are market forces out there that will help take care of this, you know? We do have a lot of space behind Spalding and other buildings in this town. I think we're gonna see those towns be used differently because we're gonna, we're gonna lose spaces on our street because DOT's gonna change a major road in here. So this, the future's coming, as we know. So I'd like to move this forward if we can. I think you have the clear information.
Yes.
That 9.10, I think, if you look around the table and the heads are shaking up and down, you might, you might get a chance to read that. And historically, we have discussed no parking requirement, townwide.
Correct.
So we're looking at that because the economics have changed dramatically. People don't own cars, you know? They just don't want them, especially in a hub like this. And this will help us with our MBTA. I don't know what'll do to MBTA, MBTA numbers per acre, but I'm not gonna have that question now. I'm not gonna ask that question, okay? It's a historic building, it's a good use of it.
So this evening, can we come to a finding or are we waiting on the parking management plan first?
I think we need to see a drawing, to be honest with you.
Okay. So let's see, and are we thinking, we'd like to see the drawing as the proposal with the, was it the four and three?
Yes.
Wanna see that? Okay. So are we agreed then that the next step is to ask for, for the drawing of the four and three as proposed? And then what we're looking at in our next deliberation on parking is looking at through the lens of 9.110?
Yep.
Which I agree is the right way to go at it because this fits all the, yeah, that just fits appropriately for the circumstances.
So the other question I'd like to ask tonight, moving on from parking, was the special permit relative to the residential use in the commercial building, which was a permit that's expired. And that one was for ground-level units, I believe?
No, it was just for six units.
It was a number, yeah, it was...
It was a special permit that was granted to change the use from the fire station commercial use to a residential, mixed-use residential.
Period. And I don't think it was contention on a certain number of units.
And there was, I don't believe, I don't think, was there a commercial, I don't believe the commercial space was actually...
No, there wasn't originally.
No.
Originally done. So it was just the conversion of a commercial building or a non-residential.
Non-residential to residential.
Yeah, we did. So I see three uses and I just wanna make sure we ask for all the special permits that we need. Apartments are allowed above commercial by right.
Right. 1.5.6 or something.
But there's a special permit needed to convert non-residential commercial buildings to residential. So we need the special permit, once we have the special permit, then the apartments are allowed by right, correct?
Yeah.
Beautiful. So there's another one that talks about a dwelling unit at grade in a commercial building.
Right.
So it's just 1.7. So we actually need two special permits?
1.7?
Yeah, you've got it right there.
So 1.5 is the conversion of non-residential to residential.
1.7 puts it on the floor.
1.6 is apartments above existing commercial, 1.7 allows to have residential, bring it down from the second floor onto that first floor. So we'd be asking for two special permits and then we'd have to look at the parking, whether or not it's a waiver or a special permit.
What is the answer on that? Is it a waiver or a special permit for the parking?
We'd have to figure, we'd have to figure it out.
You guys figure it out, yeah.
I think it's waivers, right, for the parking?
Can I make a suggestion?
Please do.
So, I've been looking at stuff over too. And I talked to Mark a little bit about this. And the application, what you're really trying to do here is you're trying to, you're submitting an application for mixed use. Mixed use being the commercial and the multifamily residential. There's actually nothing here that lands right on top of that, that request. So what I'm gonna suggest to this board is we consider something that's never been done before. And that we do a hybrid special permit that would include these categories, but all in one. So it's a hybrid. You just put in there 1.5, 1.6, 1.7. And they'll create the need for the mixed use that's there, that you're requesting. So it's just one permit, it's not gonna be three different permits.
Can we do that?
I don't know how you type it up and post it.
I think if we, as long as we cover the...
The basics?
Yeah. You know, cover the ground, I don't see why not.
I think it's a nice idea.
Yeah, luckily...
But I think it's just to ask for two special permits, because the commercial district's allowed by right. So it's just the reconfiguration as we're proposing and then if it changes...
So you're basically saying that...
1.5 and 1.7 need special permits through the planning board.
See, it doesn't, 1.5, are you reading it differently than me? So 1.5 says conversion of a non-residential or mixed-use building to a multifamily dwelling. You're trying to go from a non-residential to a mixed-use building. It's actually typed up differently than what you're asking for. That's why I was saying we gotta think a little outside the box here.
Literally.
Yeah, it's the way that it was written originally.
So if it said conversion of a non-residential to a mixed-use or multifamily building, we would have...
Just tell me that I'm just gonna put on the phone. We'll ask for it.
I would say 1.5 and 1.7.
1.5, not 1.6, apartments above ground floor?
Yeah.
Well, that's allowed by right.
It's allowed by right, so it does require a special permit.
Good, okay, got it. Just those two.
So we've got 1.5, 1.7, a change in the parking that's gonna require setback changes.
Those are gonna be...
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just touching the bases before we put this down for the night. Is there anything else out there? Is there anything else?
I did a thorough analysis of all the...
Jeff, continue your line of thought though.
I think that's it. So the parking going to six spaces, which may or may not include a handicap, which may or may not include setback changes, they gotta draw it and figure it out. We can't do that here.
Right.
He's gotta figure out how he's gonna do that. So that's number one. We've got two changes in the use charge, 1.5 and 1.7.
Each one requiring a special permit?
Each one's required, make a request for each one, just make it easier.
And you see amenable to that?
Yeah, just make it easier. And since the ground floor is by right, when it becomes a mixed-use building in a commercial district, we don't have to worry about that. That's 1.6, correct?
Right. That's right.
The apartments and all the...
Yeah, exactly. Yeah. You're gonna do, yeah, that's it? Okay.
Yep, so you'd be preparing a new plan sheet.
Yeah, we'll be revising based on what we talked and narrative and all that, but now, just, I mean, it took 45 minutes to get to this point, so you can imagine we didn't wanna just assume things. So, yes, and there was some talk about waiving the notification requirements for the special permits, but I'm guessing that doesn't include the fees.
Yeah, well, because we notified the abutters for the site plan, we could just roll that in. I think the abutter notification might not be, but the fee though, I think, with the planning board's sense, I think we, personally, I think we should, the fee for the special permit application.
I'm not worried about the fee.
I think we should still save the fee.
Yeah, what are they, a buck fifty each?
No, no, you're talking the abutters. I'm talking about the several hundred dollar application fee for a special permit.
Yeah. Mr. Chair, may I ask another question? You intend to include an affordable unit?
Correct.
Have you figured out what's the affordability limit?
I haven't, but when we rented, we met down here and we had a conversation with the...
Alicia Hershey?
And the town manager.
Good.
So we had a conversation about, yes.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah.
I'm the chair of the Housing Trust, so...
Okay, yeah.
As a member of the...
There are many of us interested in this, yeah.
So the affordable unit or the area for the affordable unit?
Yeah.
Is gonna be on the right-hand side on the first floor, so it could be handicap accessible if that's what it was.
Yeah, no, just, I was gonna say, please work with the opposite kind of development. Alyssa Hershey is the current person who's doing that. Alicia Hershey?
Alyssa Hershey.
You may have already worked with her. If you work with the town manager, I'm sure she's in his line of... Because we're starting, we gotta count up our affordable units and we need a bunch.
Okay. Before we let the applicant go, there's three issues on my first mark. I know that in the previous meeting, we waived the traffic impact statement.
Correct.
What about the other two waiver requests? Can we advance these at this meeting? And get these discussed?
Yeah, one being the visual impact exhibits. If the board is satisfied with the elevations, which may change based on what they change here with the site plan. But if the board is satisfied that the elevations, that, you know, the renderings are sufficient for the visual impact, the board could waive that one.
And what's the feeling on, let's just take a minority. How do you guys feel about that? I feel that, you know, given that this is a restoration of a building, the whole point of it is to make it look like what it is now and you've already received drawings to show what the differences, well, this. And we got the elevations, is that sufficient for the visual impact? Do you guys feel that that's okay?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, do we need a finding?
The board would need to make a motion to waive, to grant waiver request number one. It's on page five.
Yep, do I have a, do I have said motion?
I have moved.
Do I have a second?
Second and...
Further discussion?
Just wanna clarify that the waiver request number one is for the air site plan regulation, Section 4B dot 3.
Correct. Thank you.
Agreed.
And we will accept the elevation that's been presented.
We will accept the elevation. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
Chair votes aye, unanimous on waiver request number one. The second waiver request is the landscaping plan. And my thing, what I recall from the previous meeting is that, no, because there's nothing to do on the sides, and, and because it's so occluded, that's really this, we're talking about this year, that a full-scale landscaping plan would seem excessive, that, but we do want something that indicate what you're gonna do out front. Is that the, is that the understanding we arrived at last meeting?
A list of plans, but not actually where the-
A list of plans, right.
Oh, yeah, that's the one that might go there. I mean, can I, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Jeff.
May I ask, I'm sorry, I missed the last meeting.
Both of us.
You see, you, in your mind's eye, what do you see out front there? A small grassy area, a little patio for people to sit? What's the use?
I don't think grassy areas-
Yeah, I agree.
Appropriate, I, I think a place for people to sit that's nice and landscape.
Okay, were you talking planters?
Yeah.
Type stuff?
Yeah.
Okay.
And you had also asked at the last meeting about the slope on the left-hand side of the building.
Oh, yeah.
And I talked to Calvin today, and he's here. And we don't know what your concept was, but we don't see it being grass. You know, he's worried, and I embrace his worry about the snowstorms. Whatever we put there has to be able to, you know, survive the snow being piled on top of it. But however you'd like to have input, we're open to discussion on how to landscape that slope.
Yep, so maybe we should hold off on the landscaping.
So let's hold off.
No, I want to get it done. And I'll tell you why. Remember, just to remind the board, I have it here in front of me. What we're pressing is a waiver from our site plan regulations. Okay? Again, site plan regulation, section four, C dot fourteen, landscape plan. That particular section of the site plan regulations, as we spoke before, is involved more with large-scale parking lots and not a small lot where you're squeezed in.
Right.
So the lot, the final sentence of the applicant's request is that the applicant respectfully requests to provide an appropriate landscaping plan of the discrete plantings within the lawn areas rather than the required buffers and screening, which are noted in the site plan regulations. So I'm willing to accept their plan for landscaping, go through this board, and waive the requirement that's shown under the air site plan regulation, section four, C dot fourteen.
Would you like to make a motion?
So moved.
Second. And the, and discussion on it would be, I would not want you planting plant, trees there, they would become a hindrance to safe, navigating, don't want cars here, but don't put things where they can't see past them to get in and out, and on and off the property.
Okay, good.
You know, low plantings, there's low planters, something like that would be really cool. I mean-
Then last meeting, we talked about raising the garden.
According to the language, we're gonna see, as GPI's language, the appropriate landscaping.
Yep. So that, and for the discussion, we had-
Yeah, I was just gonna ask, anything else? All in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
Chair votes aye, unanimous, we got those waived. Okay, good, I just wanted to make sure. And, oh, one other-
It's gonna be beautiful.
Public safety. We did receive your note, the email, about you're gonna put up no trespassing signs, and you're putting, you're cleaning up some debris. That still leaves this big, open construction area exposed. And it is a hazard. And I would like to see, I, I would like to discuss, that having some kind of fence or physical barrier.
So before I embarked upon this-
Yeah.
I forewarned everyone that it was asking me to, to take down that without the permits to reconstruct, that it was very bad timing. You know, I was bound to it because it was part of what the approval was.
Yes, right.
I asked in the fall for a second extension to get in here in front of you, get the approvals, take down the wing, start the reconstruction. I was told there were some amount of people in town that were very unhappy that I had not executed the removal of the wing, and I had to do it by December thirty-first. So I said, be careful what you wish for, because it's gonna look and be a hazard. When we began removing the left-hand side of the building, there are huge beams that are buried up inside we could never have found, in, in discussion with the building inspector. I asked the building inspector the day we found the beams to come, and for whatever reason, it didn't occur. So I had my framing crew come in and close that whole side of the building up.
Right.
So that it wasn't a hazard. Now, I moved the equipment in today in the snowstorm, and tomorrow, we'll send a couple of labors and a machine operator over there to take what left of the debris, and we'll also take the containers up by, by the end of the week. But there's no way anybody can get in the building.
I'm not even thinking about getting in the building, I'm just thinking the space between the green wall and, and, and that remaining-
All of, whoever asked for the execution of removing it should have known that this was going to be what occurred. If I take down the rear wall, I, I run the risk of taking the whole roof structure down. You'll not have a building to be able to, to, you know, restore. It'll be gone, you know? So we have to do this methodically, I can't take any more, I could take the stairs out to the second floor, I guess that's where the break room was at one point in time. But, you know, other than that, the, the rear corner has to stay. You know, I think the fence is gonna look like-
I think what we're talking about is, is a, like a snow fence, something along those-
Oh, I thought you wanted a construction fence, like eight feet tall.
No, we're talking about something along those lines.
A barrier.
Sill fencing, snow fence, something like that.
Get fair, we didn't say-
So it's an orange fence that shows you-
I thought you wanted a construction fence, I'm like, this is gonna look horrible.
Think of it as limits of work. I think what they're talking about is limits of work style fence.
Yeah, so you want a snow fence around so nobody can enter into that area.
Exactly.
Yeah, no, I, I thought you wanted a full-blown, a fence like I use on my job sites, I'm like, this is-
It's just gonna be a ton more cost, but you have to move it every time you bring in a piece of equipment in.
Right, we're just talking, just-
Hopefully we only have to bring in a piece of-
A barrier that just, that says to people walking by, do not enter, it just makes it visually clear.
Yeah, but we use the building every day, GPR uses the building to store stuff.
I get it.
Yeah.
But just something that's, but, but, but a visual, clear barrier that said, don't walk here. That's all.
I, I misunderstood the request, and I'm like, oh my god.
That's why we're talking.
Construction fence is gonna look terrible. I'll manage that one with that.
Thank you so much.
Probably sometime early next week, because-
Perfect.
The end of this week's not supposed to be-
You're just, you do, walk by and think like a ten-year-old. You know what I mean?
I got, I got lectured today on the nuisance by my attorney, and I said, this reminds me of first year of law school. I get it, I, I read the books.
All right. I believe we're done with you guys for today.
Thank you.
Good seeing you, Cal. I'm gonna, uh, five-minute, I'm gonna call a five-minute recess.
Yep.
Heck yeah.
Need to the next hearing on-
What's that?
Uh, watch, watch, uh-
Oh, we need to vote for continuance.
Yeah.
I'm very sorry.
Uh, Mr. Diskin?
Can you come back for a moment?
Mr. Diskin?
He can abstain. We move to continue.
There were a motion to continue.
Yes, so moved.
Move to continue.
I did it.
Okay, see everybody.
Second, any discussion?
No, yes.
All, all in favor?
Aye.
And we, we didn't do the next meeting.
Chair votes, yeah, and, uh, chair says aye, and I think, did everyone vote aye?
Aye.
Aye, great. Unanimous. Thank you, thank you, gentlemen. Five-minute recess.
Forget it, I don't have any. Move to approve the January tenth, twenty-twenty-three minutes as provided.
Second. Second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
I might have to recuse myself, because there was a section in there that I had to agree. Do I have to recuse myself from the vote on the minutes, even if I did recuse myself?
This is what's interesting, you don't have to recuse yourself even if you weren't there. We do it as a matter of course, but it's not required. You can read these minutes and approve them.
Okay, well, in that case, thank you for the qualification.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
Chair votes aye, unanimous, approved.
That's the weirdest thing about minutes.
Town planner update, my man.
Okay.
Thank you.
What I'd like to update everybody on is, we finally got a real proposal for engineering review of the DPF plan for Stratton Hill.
And are you pleased with it?
Yes, yes, in fact, I discussed it with Dan today, and he, he's interested.
The scope of services is appropriate to what we want?
Right, yeah, I, I believe so, and, uh-
And do you, and, and all the fees seem reasonable to you?
Yeah, I think, I think, you know, the bottom line is, is, is in keeping with, you know, in fact, I kind of expected it to be a little more, but, but yeah, I think, you know, given the scale of the subdivision and, and how long it might take, I think, I think that's a very reasonable proposal.
What do you think?
Am I making the right thing?
Are you getting stuck or stuff?
Yeah, yeah, they're, yeah, that's, that's the, the gist of it, without all the, the act, he has all their prior work and qualifications, and they've done a lot of work in Littleton. As well, of course, they did the, the review work for the air commons forty P.
May I ask who it is that you're talking about?
Oh, yes.
Green International affiliates.
Green International affiliates.
I would say, you get on my copy.
No, I'm just someone watching, you don't know what you're talking about. Thank you.
Right, yep.
Yeah, it's-
And, and are, are you content with the exclusions, Mark?
Yes, in fact, that's what I explicitly discussed with Dan. Well, the assumptions, too, that the DPF would be responsible for analyzing the capacity issues for the wastewater and sewer. And, and Dan was okay with that. Yeah, as far as the, the other exclusions, you know, that's all pretty standard stuff.
So what's necessary for us to say? A green light for you?
Right, yeah, essentially, the, the board to make a motion to, to recommend that the town planner effectuate an agreement with Green International affiliates to retain them as our peer review engineering consultant for Stratton Hill.
And forgive my ignorance, but is there any need to, to pass this through by the applicant at all? Because I know that ultimately, they're gonna be paying for this.
Yes, yes, I, I will, but I wanted to have the board's vote before going to them.
And the vote would be to approve-
To, to authorize me to enter into an agreement where to, you know, to get the contract.
To execute an agreement with Green.
But that agreement to execute comes before, are we share this with the applicant?
I think it could. The only reason they would have to, to complain is if they think that this firm is not qualified to do the work.
Well, that would be, the Green International's a, is a well-known, very famous reputable company, right?
So I, they would see one of a couple things possibly. They would have a disagreement with Green, they might be in some sort of litigation with Green that we don't know about. The applicant may be in some, maybe, there may be something in the relationship, but that should not preclude us from getting Green lined up, I think.
Okay.
Right.
Honestly, I, I think it's nice to have the, the arrow in the quiver. If it falls apart for whatever reason, that's out of our control, we'll have to go back out.
Then we'd have to go back out.
But it is, as we've seen, it's a challenge to get a company to step up. I'm sure they want to put it on their list of work to do, too, so they can work on it.
Right, of the five that I contacted, this is the only one that finally came in.
And it's a big company, so that, you're right, they have capacity.
I, I would, I would make a motion that the board direct the town planner to execute an agreement with Green International affiliates to, I would say, put them on retainer for the peer review services of the Stratton Hill project as it goes forward.
Do I have a second?
Seconded.
I see some puzzled faces, or any discussion?
Too premature, I mean, discussion wise, I'd wait till the next meeting before, and take a, take a look at this and-
I withdraw my motion.
Okay. So let, because I, I haven't read this yet.
Yeah, we could, and, and, you know-
Can we do this?
The reason I wanted to jump on this is given the complexity of the case, and, and given that I also want whoever we hire, whoever the town hires for this, to review the application materials, because they'll be highly technical, engineering stuff to review, and, uh-
But, but do you, do you see, you don't see any material, probably wait till the next meeting for a formal-
No, no, because even, yeah, even, even if Dave Bolton and Bob Collins drop the plans off tomorrow, which I don't think they would, but-
Doesn't seem likely.
Uh, even if they did, you know, we, we would have time to make these votes after March fourteenth. But I wouldn't want to wait much longer than that.
Could we get an indication from the applicant if they have any-
Yeah, is that possible?
Disagreement?
Uh, I, I, in between now and then, I can, I can appraise them.
I, I think that would be a good idea. Why not? If we're gonna take, defer the vote to next, to the next meeting, why not share this with them, get any feedback, and then-
Right.
There, and if there is any pushback, maybe that can even be resolved before the fourteenth.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah, so I'll contact Bob Collins.
Okay, good.
The question that I had for them was, I, I liked the way they've broken it down into pieces.
Yep.
So my question to them is, can we pick and choose these pieces if we need less than the scope? Or do we need to get the entire amount that they listed at the end, the estimated budget? Because like item number one, we may already be over that, our consultant that worked for the Conservation Commission may have already done this kind of work. may have already done this kind of work. You know, when we were going through the whole application with conservation on the conservation analysis, there was an engineer involved in that. It looked at these same kind of things.
Yeah, but I think they're, he's talking, the permit application's the actual subdivision application. So it's not looking, yeah, in fact, if you look at the assumptions and the exclusions, you know, they're not gonna be looking into the wildlife and that sort of thing.
Actually, Mr. Diskin, when I read this, I read this as, maybe, I could be wrong, more, it was more of a, kind of a sample this to the fee reviews, because some of these are, some of these are starred by them.
Yeah.
And, and they're based on the scope they have as noted, but I have a feeling that they're, they'll provide a proposal for additional reviews if needed upon receipt of the documents. So this is, I see the thirty-seven thousand nine hundred sixty dollars as kind of a starting point. I think it's when they get the documents, they're gonna be able to determine where the scope's gonna change.
Right.
And I know we're spending the applicant's money, but we gotta do the work, it's gotta get done. If the scope is different than what they proposed, the scope is different. And the applicant, I'm sure, is gonna be fully cognizant of that and understanding it.
Yeah, the other thing I'd like to just mention is that when we first started talking about the necessity of this, we did not have a town engineer, so that was part of our driving force, but now we do have a town engineer.
Right, but I, even after that, I did check in.
Dan still thinks it...
Yeah, he thinks that for this case, it would be wise to go with a consultant.
Give us a little more time, please, Mark.
Right.
Okay, great. Did you have other stuff for us?
You know, last time I circulated, you know, sort of an outline of what could be a minor site plan approval, you know? If the board wants me to flesh that out a little bit more, I could do that, but... Take, take a look at, you know, when I handed out at the last meeting and see what you think.
This guy right here.
Right.
Did you send this digitally?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
Did I? All right, well, I'll resend it.
Could you be sent it so I can go through?
Yeah, I'll resend it.
Okay, thank you, sir. Okay, good.
And that's all I have, those two things.
Okay, great. Old business, new business. So, some updates, and Julie, please leave in, but... So regarding the master plan five-year review, Julie has compiled an outstanding Excel spreadsheet that allows us to go with Robert and Carly's approval to the different department heads and ask them for the sections relevant to you, and she's done different tabs for each of the relevant sections per department, to give a sense of the status, you know, complete, not started, not applicable, and I forget what the fourth column was, and a room for comments.
It's in process.
In process. So she, she's developed that. I'm gonna write an introduction that would be, like, just explaining what this is and how it'd be used. I've contacted Robert and Carly, and have not heard back from them yet. What would, next step would be for us to present our proposal to them, and then get the authorization, get their feedback and authorization, then pursue to the other functional areas, and then we'll continue. Julia, anything to add to that?
No, it seems great. We're trying to keep it easy.
Ken, I remember you said to me, you had a conversation with Dan Finnsclaw quickly about regarding some of the trails that we were talking about, and he just said, there's no updates. Is that correct?
There's been a call. When we met, he indicated that it was a good idea, and that he could talk internally to his highway department, DPW, other people in the department, and see if they had some facilities that they could accomplish on their own. So when I saw him last week, I asked him about that, and he hadn't had a chance to do that. So we're still waiting for him to give us an indication of some of the criteria that go, because the work can be carried out by DPW if you think it can be. It looks like we're gonna have to set up a meeting with Dr. Robert Ponfrieh.
Oh, yeah, of course.
Talk about it, you know, a little bit, get it back moving again.
Okay, good. And then, yeah, go ahead, Joe.
I was gonna say, I would like to take a minute and catch you guys up on what's been going on with the MRPC. There's a couple of things I think that are worth talking about. Is this a time?
Yeah.
Okay, so there's all, Manchester Regional Plains always got stuff going on, so I'm gonna cherry pick a couple of things. Something came up at the last meeting, and this is the third or fourth year they've done it, and I'm gonna read you an acronym, and I'm gonna explain what it is. The EEA, EEA, F-I-L-L-T-E-R-R.
Your taxpayers are working, everybody.
I'm gonna give you this piece of paper, okay?
I know what the EEA is, so...
This item is approved, it's a funds request for the future industrial lands for long-term economic resilience and recovery. That's the filter. Okay, grant application, we submitted. So, what it is, is in the MRPC zone, there are appropriate and inappropriate areas for commercial or industrial development. And what they wanna do is kind of do a, they wanna get a consultant in, kind of do a GIS overview of what's right. You don't wanna put an industrial complex that it doesn't have a road on it that can handle the traffic. But they're looking to bring economic opportunities into the MRPC region. So filter is what they're calling it. They think they may have a chance for this grant this year, but it's to look at parts of the, of areas of the towns in their region that may be appropriate for some sort of industrial or commercial investment. They're identifying opportunities, okay? And the conversation, I wonder who drove this conversation, went like this. They're thinking about trucking. I'm thinking about, we've got some of the best educated people in Massachusetts who are now focusing on the Worcester area because biotech's going crazy out here. You don't need to have a industrial area that's got lots of cars and lots of trucks. You've got people working in there, you, biochemistry companies create and make products. It's very, very different than what we think of as industrial. So there's other opportunities, so they're thinking about that. But it's ways, it's, it's designed to identify areas to increase economic opportunities in this area. We're saying get handed over to economic development. We are very rare. There's not a lot of towns in this area have a Department of Economic Development. So, we're kind of way ahead of the game, it turns out. So that's what that's there for. That's number one. I think I mentioned previously about the idea around cottage development, smaller unit development, entry-level housing development. That's something that's moving forward with them. Of course, the MBTA Communities Technical Assistance stuff has been going on. And by the way, Mark, we were left out of they've got it done, and then all of a sudden, they realized, it is done. Congratulations, Mark, thank you very much.
Excellent, that's great news.
We haven't gotten the absolutely, you're finished, but we've touched, we've ticked off all the boxes and done all the work.
And I'm just curious, and how does that put us in terms, compared to the other towns? Are we ahead, average?
Way ahead, I think. We may be one of the few.
I don't know how many towns are in the MRPC. Fitchburg and Air.
We're the only two that have made it.
Yeah, but, but if you look at what's been going on in Fitchburg in the last ten years, they have really been working on revitalization, and it's, unfortunately, Leamester, Leamester and Fitchburg saw a real economic downturn, and a lot of the buildings just got abandoned. The piping was torn out of it. They just had a real bad time. So, people saw that, and there's a lot, there's a lot of entry-level housing in three, four, and five-unit, three-decker homes out there. And that is just, it's incredible how much, and then they've extended the, the train goes out to Fitchburg now, didn't before.
To Garth.
And Garth. A bunch of things have happened in that area that have just put them on the map. And so we're, you know, do you wanna be in the same sentence as Fitchburg? Congratulations, guys, we are in the MBTA world. Mass Broadband Institute, digital equity is something else they're working on. I bring that up not because it has a direct impact on Air, but they're thinking outside of the box. There are towns in this area that don't have enough people to build their own broadband infrastructure. So towns are getting together and doing like you would do a water source for multiple towns. It's considered a utility now. So more and more towns are thinking out of the box along those lines. And it's really interesting to see some people start thinking about working with that neighbor in that town next door that's been the high school rivalry for fifty or a hundred years. So it's kind of interesting happening around there. And that's the ones I'm gonna talk about now. Everything else is what they really do on a regular basis, DLTE loans, constantly going grant opportunities and stuff like that. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
But that filter, to me, is pretty interesting. So as you're driving around or walking around, and you see an opportunity, I mean, do you guys, I'm surprised how much industry we have in this town. You know, like splash. Everyone's, every time you hit the button on your car and wash your windshield, pretty good possibility that product came from Air.
I use tofu to clean my windshield. Thank you, that was, I appreciate the detail before MRPC, thank you very much. Before we conclude, I just want, from Nathan and Ken, any updates on your thinking about zoning? Has your working group been able to meet? Anything going on there?
We're meeting Friday.
Great.
Thursday.
Thursday.
Perfect, that's...
Thursday at six.
Beautiful. As, as we all witnessed with our, with the applicant, you know, our fourteen Washington Street, the zoning stuff is really important, so I applaud the work, and I can't wait to hear what comes out of those discussions, because, yeah, there's a lot to review, so, excellent.
It's also, excuse me, Mr. Chair, and this, I think the undercurrent of the conversation earlier was, zoning has to change to meet the times.
Right.
The economic pressure is no longer two cars, one person stays home, the other person goes home.
Okay, great. If there are no other, if there's no other old business, new business, I'd like to adjourn. Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
It was a great meeting, thank you.